Would you call the road, please? Oh, you want to start again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so I have.
Okay, I'm going to call the special call meeting of Carthage City Council Thursday, July 18th, 2021 to order.
Except it's Wednesday, I believe.
You're right, it is Wednesday.
I think so.
Okay, sorry. I'm just reading right from here.
That's about four persons.
Let's start over.
The hand might.
Let's just start over.
It's like Thursday, doesn't it?
All right, you're right, I'm just reading straight from here. Um, okay. There's Barbara, well, good, we waited for you some. There, that's about right. All right, let's start all over again.
Okay.
All right, I'm calling to order the special call meeting of the Carthage City Council for Wednesday, July 18th, 2021. Would you call the road, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Canapple?
Here.
Councilman Batcott?
Here.
Councilman Evil?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
And I think you said July, it was August, too. I could be wrong.
I'm just reading it, okay, uh, sorry.
And I'm here.
It is July, Thursday, July 18th.
Now, it's just.
August 18th.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, August 18th.
Let's start all over. Let me, let me mark through what is on this darn thing and start all over. Can we start over? I'm sorry. I'm just reading. It's a run of me, okay?
Yeah, that's my fault.
Okay, let's see, August 18th. Okay, one more time, um.
Councilwoman Canapple? Here. Councilman Batcott?
Here.
Councilman Evil?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Ms. Mariece?
Here.
City Attorney Mullins?
Here.
Okay, we have two orders of business, security lights, and a city attorney clarification. Uh, I, I would like to make this, make a statement, and then whatever y'all would like to say about the security lights, um, just.
A motion, we suspend the rules so you can make your statement.
Second.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, just a little history back in the.
We have to go first.
Oh, well, I thought I could probably just talk, okay. Um, all in favor of suspending the rules?
Uh.
All right, thank you very much. Um, just a little history, back in, early in this year, we realized that the, the older lights on the ball field were just very, very unsafe. They were falling, a couple of them, so we realized we had to take them down. We were in a series of conversations back and forth for a couple of weeks between Upper Cumberland, myself, our public works, just trying to figure out the best approach to this. Um, we finally honed in on the fact that we would take down the old security lights. Uh, they were gracious enough to say if we needed other lights, there were some extra ones available, and that we would keep the security lights there, uh, on, on the poles. Well, there were some emails that went back and forth on March 11th. There was a little bit of confusion in one of them about the, uh, security lights, and I, I didn't realize until I started looking back, right after our count, last council meeting, that in one of those, I said, let's, let's do take those down, and then I talked with our supple, police, and they said, no, we need to keep those up because that's what we use when we patrol. So I called the next day to engineering and said, okay, we need to take down the main lights but keep the security lights. Um, no, there's no documentation of that. There wasn't documentation of most of the conversations we had going back and forth because we were just very friendly, talking about what do we do for the city in the best interest of the city. Um, but the, the, the fact that we did talk about that the next, uh, what happened is they actually took down the old lights and kept the security lights. That was five months ago, they've been up there ever since. Two weeks ago, I'm not sure what, why someone thought it was time to take those down. As I stated in the last meeting, I did not call them to do that. Public Works did not call them to do that. In fact, I had no idea they were even going to be taken down, and when I learned after the fact they had been taken down, then I immediately called engineering and I told them, no, you have to either reinstall those lights or put up a new system of security lights out there, uh, which they did. They put up a very nice security system out there to do what has to be done, and has to just light the ball field for our crews to be able to go out there and see it. Um, now, I understand someone recently might have seen some of those old emails, not understood the context in which they were written, didn't understand the conversations around them, didn't understand the security lights were remaining there for the last five months, and if that's the case, and there was confusion about my emails, then I take responsibility for that commu, confusion because the buck stops here. But the thing is, the situation was taken care of immediately, and once we found out the security lights had been taken down, there are good security lights there now. We're in a great working situation with Upper Cumberland Electric, and I hope we stay that way, so I just think it's, it's a, it's a done deal. Let's, maybe it's just time to move on, do what we need to do. Yes, sir.
All right, I've got a couple of things to discuss as well.
Okay.
Um, we can paint this how we want to paint it. Um, I, I took your word for it when you said I had nothing to do with this. I even just spent not even three minutes to look up these things. Not only did you say you didn't do it, there was an elaborate story of all these conversations you had, and it's pretty clear, let's take down the security lights on the ball field also. The lights in the park area are enough at night. Does everything else sound okay? Your words to them. Now, we all went through this in public, asked you what happened to this, and you said had no idea. We weren't aware this was going to happen until after we found out later that night they weren't there. I called the supervisors and I asked what was going on. We didn't ask these be taken down. Upper Cumberland doesn't do the light bulb, and I said, I thought they were our city lights. Now they took down all the lights, all the wires, and, um, these are your words that you said, okay? So you asked them to take them down, and they just happened to take them down that week. We were also told that there was just one bid on the lights, ball field, but another gentleman showed up that night to give a.
I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, just let me finish, and I'm happy to let you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. You said that there was one bid for the lights, okay? But there was another gentleman that I just happened to go shake his hand at the beginning of the meeting, had no idea who this guy was. It's like, hey, I'm Cole, and he said, uh, his name, and I said, okay, and just asked what he was doing, he said, oh, I'm here to bid the lights. Here for the lights. So there was a second person there. He wasn't even going to get recognized unless I called him and I just happened to meet him. So there was two bids. Lights went down the week we were doing the bids, and then from what I remember, if y'all correct me as a council, we asked the attorney to handle the situation.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay? So from what I've heard from the attorney is he tried to handle the situation, and you told him not to. So you directly, one, went against the council's wishes. Two, you didn't run this by us, asking if we wanted to take down these security lights because that's our decision, that you can't just go out willy, willy-nilly do that. We can't go out and just be like, hey, Les, go take care of this. We can't do that. Well, it's not in our, uh, it's not in our job spectrum, it's not in yours either. We vote as a council here. If we want council members against it, that's one thing, it's fine, but as a council as a whole, we vote as a council, we can't just go make decisions. So, one, you had something that I don't know how much it cost us. Two, you went out trying to go and find out, uh, you wouldn't let him go talk to them, and then it, for me, it seems like you were trying to cover something up. That's all it points to. Your words here, your words on tape, and those are just two of them, and there was a whole big story that happened on it, so, I mean.
Just for clarification, that email was five months ago, it didn't happen recently.
Doesn't matter when it happened.
It doesn't matter, you told them to do it.
Well, no, but they didn't do it because we called the next day and said the police need you to keep those up. There's, all they are is security lights for the police. I called them the next day, they didn't in fact keep them up. They took down the old unsafe lights, they kept up the security lights.
That's only your word, and the lights ultimately came down.
How many phone calls did everybody get over this? I got a lot.
A lot.
Okay.
My question would be is, you communicated by email and everything else you did, why did you not email them back? That way we would have a record of that.
That's the only time I emailed them about that particular thing.
But what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying, Mary, is you emailed them and said, hey, take the lights down. You said the next day you called them. How come you just didn't email them and said, hey, we've made a mistake, don't take those lights down? That way we would have a trace of that.
No, because we had talked, we were talking about other things, and very honestly, most of our communication was by phone. And, and this email was just to one person, I think, so I'm not even sure why someone would have taken that seriously five months later.
It's just, it's not, it's not in your purview to, you can't, you can't just make decisions like that to just go take down lights without addressing the council.
That was not a decision. It did not happen.
Taking them down?
That was.
Well, I, it did happen because nobody.
That was five months ago, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not about five months ago, you were mayor then.
I'm saying if someone saw that and took it out of context and didn't realize that I asked them to keep them up, and they did take them down two weeks ago, then I take responsibility for that confusion. Uh, we got them fixed immediately. There was some confusion, they took it down, I got it fixed immediately. I did not ask them, I did not call these people two weeks ago and say, please take down these lights.
So two weeks ago, they, they went out there on their own volition to take them down?
As far as I know, I didn't, I wasn't aware they were even out there. Well, Cole sent us email telling they were taking down lights, but that's all.
I would say probably what would happen is, is Upper Cumberland's very busy. They got the work order, that wasn't on their priority list to knock those lights out. They had a free minute or whatever, they went over and took them down after they had the time to do it.
Okay.
It probably wasn't one of those things like, oh, we got to get these security lights right now.
Let, let's, let's, let's say that happened, that happened, okay? Let's say that it's just a work order, late work order, five months.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why it probably happens.
Yeah, it probably happened. So coincidence, five months, happened, just happened to be on the same week, we were getting a bid from only one bidder, that there was two bidders, and then, so those are all still coincidences, and there was a coincidence that, um, when we asked the city attorney to go and find out what happened, she told the city attorney not to, and then by the time he said, you know what, I'm gonna do this, she said, you're not gonna find anything.
Well, you're.
And we don't have, just coincidence, we don't have any more email traffic, coincidentally.
I, I believe what I told the attorney was I had a meeting the next day with Upper Cumberland, and they would fix the situation.
We didn't ask you to have a meeting.
Why don't we wait to the legal course? Why don't we hear from the attorney? First of all, I have a question for Mr. Mullins, if you don't mind answering it.
You'll probably need to go back on the record and vote that I can disclose this in an open meeting if you want to disclose it.
Okay. Motion, go back to Robert's rule.
Second.
Hold on.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All right. All right.
And a motion that, um, City Attorney Mullins be able to disclose all this information to the public.
I'll say.
I thought, we already, we already said you could do that, please go ahead.
We have to vote on it.
We gotta vote.
All in favor, please vote on it.
All right.
All right. So, Mr. Mullins, before we start, I have a question for you.
Uh huh.
Do you have any personal or business connection with anyone on this council?
No.
Thank you.
All right, so, as you got voted the other night, I'm new, I'm the new guy in town, I don't know how long about this situation. I didn't know anything, but I don't even know where the ball field's at, honestly, I don't. I was driving by, and I think I seen South Carthage, and I, that's, I don't, I don't even know where the ball field is. But anyway, my understanding of the motion the other night was that I was to discover what in fact happened to the security lights. Um, I received a phone call from the mayor the next day that told me she was having a meeting or something with the president, president of UCMC, or the manager, or somebody at UCMC, was going to try to discover the situation and asked that I hold off on calling Mr. Winkler until that, and I, she was scared that the city might get in some type of litigation or something, and I explained to the mayor, look, I work with people all day, I'm not here to get people sued, I'm not, I'm not doing that. I'm, I'm gonna do what the majority asked me to do, the majority asked that I call Mr. Winkler, figure out what happened to the security lights. Some time went by, I was busy at my office doing some things, and I hadn't had a chance to get ahold of Mr. Winkler. I had other issues that I needed to speak with Mr. Winkler about anyway, not, had nothing to do with this. Uh, maybe, I'm gonna estimate a week, it might not have been a week, I don't know exactly when, I'm gonna estimate that if, if I. I received another call from the mayor that said, uh, and I'd got some subsequent calls in between, you know, um, I, whether it was about this issue or not, I can't really bring up, I can't, it don't really come to mind, but the next time it came to mind was that she had said, well, hey, I had another meeting, we went to the ball field, the lights were gonna go back up, there's really no need to really call city att, or UCMC's attorney because the situation is fixed. And I said, well, mayor, I, I want you to understand something. I can't, I can't go against what they said, I'm glad the situation's fixed, I'm sure that helps everybody and the citizens, and, but that isn't what was voted on. The vote, what was voted on was to determine what in fact happened to the security lights. She's, she had said, well, why don't you call Mr. Winkler and just state, you know, you called him and then, you know, you, because we really don't need to get into this issue because they're fixed, and I said, well, I'm gonna ask Mr. Winkler what happened to these security lights, that's what was voted on, that's what I needed to. The day went by, I finally got ahold of Mr. Winkler, um, I told Mr. Winkler what was going on, and he said, well, I understand, and he said, I kinda know what you're talking about, we had some employees that were watching your meeting that night, um, and they went back and tried to research the issue and figure out why the security lights in fact came down. Uh, Mr. Winkler said the security lights were taken down because we have an email from the mayor stating to take down the security lights, and I said, do you still have that email? And he said, yes, I can get it to you. And I said, well, that's good, send me the email, and, you know, we'll look at it. I hung up the phone with Mr. Winkler, I don't know, a few minutes went by, I don't know if the mayor called me or I called, I can't really remember who called who, and I, I told the mayor that I had, um, you know, wanted to have a special call meeting, that I had found out some issues that I wanted to address the board on entirely. The first situation I wanted to address the board on, and I guess this will take care of the agenda, you know, the second point of all this, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I, I want you guys to know I don't represent any one of you individually. I don't represent the minority, I don't represent the mayor, I represent the majority of this board, and whatever the majority votes on, whether I like it or not, whether the minority likes it or not, or whether the mayor likes it or not, or any, each, any individual department head or employee likes it or not, that's not, for their say, that's not, I do what the majority asks regardless, as long as it's ethical and legal, I will do what the majority asks. Now, with that being said, my job is to handle the legal affairs. I drive that train. I do the legal affairs, I'm not, the majority don't tell me how to do my job. I drive the legal ship, and I'll do it the way that I feel is best in my practice of the law, uh, my, my experience with things, I handle that. So if you ask me to do something, I will do it as, if that's what the majority wants, I would just ask that you let me do it how I feel is best to do it, because I'm the one under the ethical constraints, uh, with my law license on the line about how I handle the issue that you've asked me to handle. I will tell you that I'm not out here to get you guys in litigation so I can make more money, and, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm not here to do that, okay? I understand maybe people see lawyers, they get nervous and think, oh, gosh, you know, somebody's, that's not what lawyers sometimes work as intermediaries between people, too, and find out issues that lawsuits aren't even involved, so. But again, I, I just tell you that to say, I want ever, each and each, each one of you to know that, uh, I represent the majority. Now, maybe there's been accusations, I don't know if it's floating around, that I might have some type of personal affairs going on with individuals on this board, I don't know either, none of you, really. I can't really tell you all of your names right offhand, personally, as I said here right now, um, I, I don't, other than being the city's attorney, I don't know any of you, okay? I don't know that any of y'all know me. If you do, I, I, I don't know how you would, I'm not from this area, my entire family, like I told y'all when I came down here and interviewed, my entire family's from Oakley County and lived in Oakley County for their entire lives since we came over here from England, so, I, I, you may know my family, but probably not closely. So, again, if there's accusations that I'm working with anyone individually, I, I don't know where that comes from, because again, I don't know anybody. Uh, but be that as it may, again, my job is to handle the majority's affairs, and I'm gonna do those as I feel is best. Now, you understand that, and each one of you know that I have talked to you, one, each one of you individually about this situation, um, I contacted you all individually, I talked to MTS, and MTS told me that it was appropriate for me to contact you guys individually. Um, I cannot be a mediator between two council members saying, hey, you need to vote on this, or you need to, you know, uh, Steve Cole wants, you know, you to vote on this, and I think it would be, I, that's not my job either. I'm not to get in the middle of that, I'm not going to get in the middle of that. You guys are the decision-making people, you know, I, I don't, I don't get in the middle of votes. As I told you in my memo to you, I, situations such as this, it's not my job to draw your opinions from it, it's not my job to make conclusions from it, that's your job, not my job. So, again, back, back to where we're going. So I got off the phone with, with Jamie. Mayor, again, I called the mayor, the mayor called me, I can't remember, and I asked her to have a special call meeting about this issue. I stated that I wanted to have a special call meeting to address the issues of my representation of the council, and two, that I had found out some issues that I wanted to tell any, everyone individually. I had been told from the beginning of this that I couldn't contact you guys individually, that you guys weren't supposed to contact me individually, that I was to contact, you know, I, if you had a question, it was directed to the mayor, and then the mayor asked the question. Where did that come from? That's what I was told by the mayor.
Well, I believe the last part of that was you then sent the, the answer to everybody.
Right, I'm saying, I'm saying in the beginning of my representation of the, of the city.
But that is something the council actually voted on in the resolution, that's, that's not on our records.
No, that's not, no.
Yes, it is, that, that if one person had a question.
Source your, source it.
Well.
Can't just put out a blind accusation.
You guys actually voted on it, that if one person outside of the meeting had a question, it went to the attorney, and the attorney addressed it to everybody, the answer.
No.
Well, he's saying that you're saying it has to go through you.
Well, that.
That's what he's saying.
Well, it comes to the mayor, to him, and then he addresses everybody.
This is made up. You're making that up. It, that's, that's not true in any way, this is again, this is like.
So do you think it's okay for one individual to ask a question outside and nobody else to get that?
I, I think that comes back from Attorney Moore, when we said.
Right.
He, when he said that he wasn't going to, you remember this? He wasn't going to.
Entertain questions.
Personally, but this is, this is totally different. To say you guys can't talk is not the same as what was happening with Attorney Moore.
That's Attorney Moore's decision, not Eric's.
That's not a legal decision, that's a, that's a personal opinion. That's a personal opinion.
I don't know that anyone said you could talk to this thing.
Like, the saying that, like, when we hire an attorney, I, I'm not an attorney.
What was that?
Go, go ahead.
Motion, suspend the rules?
Yeah, second.
All right, all in favor?
All right. When we hire an attorney, we're, we're not attorneys here, I don't, I think none of us are attorneys now, we used to have an attorney on here, but we don't. And I'm not an attorney, I don't know how to do things legally, so I, I trust our attorney as a whole.
That's why we hire him.
To do these things, that's why we hire him, and so his lane, is his lane is legal. That is his lane. We're not to get involved with that, the mayor's not to get involved with that, we hire, now if we don't like the way he's driving in that lane, we fire him. That's how we do things, that's.
As a, as a whole?
As a whole, yeah. And he represents us as a whole. Continually, this is the third attorney who this has happened with, and we've had many other supervisors who it happens with, our supervisors answer to the city council as a whole, as a majority, as a whole. None of them answer to any of us at this table individually. That includes the mayor as well. It is the same premise as me going out and just saying, you know what? I don't like those lights up there, I need them to come down. Oh, let me send you an official email to come down. I can't make that decision. You can't make that decision. She can't make that decision. So the decision at hand is here, okay, it happened, let's, it happened in March 11th. She gave an order that didn't get ran by the council to take those lights down.
Let me, go ahead.
Do it.
I understand what you're saying, but we do have to say that she does have the supervisor of day-to-day operations. She has that ability, but she does have the ability to make arbitrary decisions concerning the city, like she did as far as take lights down, make major changes to things without our vote.
The supervisory area, that was, that was covered to be cleared up when we were gonna be, uh, when it went through the House and the Senate and our amendment to our, um, city charter, because it was, it's a blurry area, it's not clearly defined. So what you're stating isn't true, and it's not not true, it's just where it's that blurry area. We had that cleared up, and basically trying to set up so that there, we're trying, we've been trying to set up so we get a city manager position, so that people who actually have experience managing cities do that. But right now, as, as it goes, the way the charter reads is the buck stops here as a whole.
Okay, but somebody has to be in charge during the day to supervise the supervisors, is what I'm saying.
No, no one, I mean.
Would you like to see a, a copy of the charter?
I would, I, I've read over it, but you're welcome to source that. No, we don't need, we don't.
I didn't say we need it, I said, that's how it works.
No, no, not as, I'm saying, we need it. It's, that's not how, we, we don't have a role for a supervisor of supervisors, that's why we have supervisors. The mayor's an executive branch, it's just a branch of government, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a day-to-day, um, you look at other cities, most other cities that are our size don't have a day-to-day mayor.
Well, I believe in our charter, it is said that way, and that is the law right now until, if, if it's changed.
Well, we can't have a meeting every time there would be a light to take down or something.
No, we can't.
Yeah, there'd be no way for that, that's what I'm saying, we, we can't, you know.
There's a light to take down that would go to which supervisor?
Would be Les.
There we go.
But if, if the mayor can't make that arbitrary decision without us, he can't go out and do it himself either.
Right, I mean.
Somebody has to be in charge of that situation to say, mayor, this is what we want done. Put it on the agenda, we get it done, that's how.
Well, I would think that, go ahead, Barbara.
I just don't, don't think the issue at hand is that whether or not she had the right to have the lights taken down, I, I'm not questioning that, that she at some point had the right, so that.
I don't mean to interject, but I could probably finish the rest of mine, and I can sit down, and y'all can have discussion if you want me to finish the rest of mine.
I'm sorry, I thought you was.
Let me figure out where I was at, my whole thing. Uh, so, anyway, the mayor kept talking about what, back to the conversation as soon as I got off the phone, Mr. Winkler, stated, you know, it sounds like you know something else, and I said, mayor, I want to address the city as a whole, you know, the council as a whole, I don't want to tell one individual member, I would really like to address the Stated, you know, it sounds like you know something else, and I said, Mayor, I want to address the city as a whole, you know, the council as a whole, I don't want to tell one individual member, I would really like to address the council as a whole about this issue. She kept on and on about what I knew, what I knew, and I said, well, Mayor, I'll go ahead and tell you since you're gonna keep asking me, that I found out you sent an email to take down the security lights. And she stated at that time that she assumed that I would find that email, I don't really know what that meant, but stated she assumed that I would find that email, that, um, and I'm not quoting, uh, this is kind of taking from the conversation, but that there was, I was making a mountain, a mountain out of a molehill, that it really wasn't that big a deal, that the lights were going to be fixed, that they were gonna be put back up. Um, so it really wasn't that big a deal, and I just needed to drop it, and I said, well, Mayor, that's, again, I'm, I'm not gonna drop it, I'm gonna continue on figuring out what the situation was. And the conversation ended, she said she was gonna call some people and we got off the phone. Later, later that night, I was at home, um, an email came up, it was from the mayor, she was apologizing for, I think I forwarded that email to you guys, she was apologizing for, you know, the way, the way things went down, she was sorry about the, about it, she appreciated the hard work that I was doing for the city. She understood, and she stated that she had went back through her emails and found the emails that you now have, that she had sent to Mr. Anderson, that she didn't, it didn't jog her memory when we was having the council meeting, but she had since found the emails, and that's when you, I've got those emails. Um, that's when I contacted each one of you individually, told you guys what had happened. Um, since that time, me and the mayor had another conversation, and the mayor stated that, again, uh, she was, she knew that, uh, the email was out there, we talked about the email, and she stated that she wanted me to address to you guys that, as she stated, that there was, you know, several months in between her sending the email and, and the actual work being done, and she said that bolstered her position that she had a conversation the next day, and what she told me was, Mr. Anderson, I'm not, Mr. Anderson, I'm not sure who that is, um, I think he's somebody in a supervisory position.
I think he's manager of Upper Cumberland Electric.
Okay, so, Mr. Anderson, she'd had a conversation with Mr. Anderson the next day after she'd sent that email, telling Mr. Anderson that she was in fact confused about what he was meaning by the lights, and that she had told him not to take down the security lights. I said, Mayor, I, I don't know about that conversation, you know, that you had over the phone, but, you know, it is what it is. Now, yesterday, Mr. Winkler called me back, and I spoke to Mr. Winkler again about this situation, and I asked Mr. Winkler if anyone from UCMC had told him since this time that there had been a conversation taking place between the mayor and Mr. Anderson the day after the email was sent. He said he was not aware of any such conversation taking place, nobody had told him that, but that he would look into it and ask around and see if, in fact, that happened. Uh, I forwarded all, Mr. Winkler sent me an email again today, following up on the issue, I forwarded all that to your emails that I sent the memo to, I don't know if you all got it or not, but anyway, I forwarded that email. Mr. Winkler stated that he had had a chance to talk, I guess, to some employees there to see if this conversation had taken place, and none of the employees remembered this conversation taking place about, you know, to take down, not to take down the security lights the next day. That's what Mr. Winkler told me today via email, and that's where I stand today, so, that's my full report to you guys, what you've asked me to do, that's all I know at this point in time, um, and I'll let you guys go from there. So, I believe that clears up my two, my other issue.
I do have two questions, and I think I asked you about this when we were having a conversation, that, um, Upper Cumberland is a great partner of ours, and I didn't think this was something that.
You, you were, you were concerned about the issue of tarnishing.
But I did ask you at the time, and we never produced this, I said, could you provide me the work orders for, for the first time when they took down, well, or then I'm asking you now, can you provide work orders for when they first took down the lights, the ball field lights, five months ago, and the work order for when they took down security lights a couple of weeks ago? The point being, at the time, if they were coming out to take down ball field lights, and they were aware that, or they thought that someone wanted them to take down the security lights, they would have done it at the same time.
I will add then, I forgot about that issue, I did ask Mr. Winkler why, you know, the email was sent in March, and it was just taken down a few weeks ago. He said, I, like you guys have said, that sure it wasn't an issue of top priority to take down security lights, that, um, it was just, they're, they're busy, it took some time to get over there to get them taken down.
Rather than hypothetical reasons.
I'm telling you what Mr. Winkler had told me.
I would like you to produce, please, ask him to produce the work order from, I guess it would have been March when they took down the major lights, and to produce the work order, they can't do this without a work order, the work order for two weeks ago, I, whatever it was, August 2nd, Monday, August 2nd.
And.
And I would like a copy of those.
Okay, uh, I don't have those right now, but I'll ask Mr. Winkler if he can get those.
That is very important to this whole conversation.
Uh, where was I going?
Are we allowed to discuss directly with Mr. Anderson or whoever it was, uh, have upcoming, what his take is on, did she call, or do we even know that?
I, I don't know that I would get into that situation with him, I, 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 you know, I, UCMC did ask that, you know, hope that this situation had resolved itself in that email that I sent you through their attorney, you know, that, that they hoped this issue was taken care of. Mr. Winkler did go on to state to me that, like I stated in the meeting there that night, that UCMC would have never unilaterally made the decision to take down the lights, that's not something they do. They don't take from customers without being first, you know, there's some type of decision made, and that's for any customers, not just a city, they don't just come down and unilaterally take them down without some discussion being made, or someone asking that it be done. He stated that it was his opinion, they had no reason to take down the security lights because that's how they make money, they want the security lights up because they're charging you electricity for them, if they come down, they're not making any money, so, they, they want the lights up. That could have been the rea, I don't know, I'm not gonna say, that's what Mr. Winkler told me, that nobody would have unilaterally taken down the lights without being asked.
Mayor, I got, Mayor, I got my hands in.
I'd like him to recall one more thing in our conversation.
Mayor, he, we.
It's open discussion, so.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, this is smoke and mirrors, the, the issue at hand here, let, let's just, I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt here, Mayor, again, that you sent this email, and you completely forgot about it. And you just completely forgot about it, and they just happened to hit it on the same week we're voting on this, and the same week we had some discrepancies between how many bidders we had on it.
And could I inter, intersect?
Go ahead.
And, and at the last meeting, you stated emphatically that you did not tell them to take the security lights down.
I did not call them and tell them, I did not.
And let's just say.
I did not even remember.
Let's say this whole thing about, I mean, this whole story you gave everyone in, on publics, on record, um, you completely forgot about this, let's just say this, okay? But at a certain point, you did remember, and you went to go try to fix it, and instead of, instead of saying, guys, I messed up, I said this, I forgot, I said this, you went and tried to cover it up.
No, no.
You did. I thought you would find this email, you could have just said, hey, I think I sent an email on this.
Well, again, this is conversation, and sometimes conversation, but I do want to say, Mr. Mullins, I did, in our conversation, I said to you, if, if I had wanted them to take those lights down, they would have been taken down at the same time they took the major lights down, if I had not turned around and said, no, we talked to the police, those lights need to stay.
Mayor, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't remember.
I know you don't, you don't remember several things we talked about.
I don't remember anything about you stating anything about the police.
Yeah.
The same old story we've had for two, two and a half years, you try to make, make up stuff to cover yourself.
You, you're putting, you're, you're deciding where things can be forgotten, but when we have physical proof, you want us to say, well, I did say this, but if they said, I mean, it, it has to be in your favor. And this is all smoke and mirrors from an issue at hand, and the issue is that not only did you lie to us, or allegedly lied to us, but then you went and cover, tried to cover it up, and on top of not trying to cover it up, you went in front of the council.
Councilman, I take offense that you're saying that I lied.
I'm not, it's not, it's not an opinion.
But I said that night was totally accurate, I did not call Upper Cumberland and ask them to take the lights down, I didn't even know they were gonna do that.
Oh. So, really, okay, your words, all, go ahead, keep going.
That email, again, was five months ago, if they had been, if, if they had thought I really meant to take down the security lights, it would only make sense to do all of that at one time, take down the major lights, take down the security lights, that was not the case. We called because the police said, no, we'd like to keep those lights up there, it's that simple, it's not, this is not a federal offense, we, we had security lights out there.
It's actually an ethics violation, it's a huge ethics violation.
Exactly, that's what it is.
No, it's not an ethics violation, ethics, read our ethics code, that has to use misuse of finances by employees and, and the council.
Lying in a council meeting.
Again, I take offense to that, that was not.
I, you're not.
Well, sir, I did not lie in that meeting, I did not, no, that time.
You already stated that you did not tell them not to take the lights down.
I did not tell them to come that ti, they didn't take the lights down, and it wasn't until after our meeting, when, when this all came out, and by the way, the way this came out in the meeting was not handled very well because Upper Cumberland is a dear partner of ours, and there were accusations made that really were not true about them.
Based on what you told us, go ahead, yeah, sorry.
But, but again, it wasn't until after that meeting, and I started going back through some old emails that I discovered, the, five months ago, five months, how many of you remember emails from five months ago?
I do.
You don't have to remember emails, they're written down.
Steve's got, let's let Steve talk, he's, he's had a hangup for like a good minute here.
Yeah. I just want to say this, nobody on this board has a problem with Upper Cumberland.
No.
No.
Nobody, does anyone here have a problem with Upper Cumberland? Okay, I want to make sure that's clear. I also would like to make a motion that we let an Upper Cumberland employee who's sitting here describe us the work order program, and tell us how that works, how long it takes, what could possibly be the reason why it didn't happen at the same time, does anyone have a problem with that?
No issue with that whatsoever.
I make a motion that we allow Mr. Gibbs speak on behalf of Upper Cumberland, explain the procedure if he's comfortable doing that.
Second.
I, I don't have a problem speaking, but I cannot speak on Upper Cumberland's behalf, you know, I can't do that, and not in this meeting, I, I can't even describe to you that process without someone playing that.
That's fine, that's fine.
You know, today, I'm here as a citizen representative, Smith County Football League, I'm the president here, so I wanted to sit in and see what the deal is with the lights.
No problem, I just wanted to see, you know, you, you know the inner workings of it, and I'm sure you have insight.
I did, I mean, yeah.
But if you, if you can't, we, I wouldn't want to get in trouble either.
We don't want to blow you out, but.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to do that.
No, I know you wasn't, that's fine, I understand.
Would you say though that I went out of my way to put some lights back up there?
If you can't say that.
I think he needs, yeah, let's, all right, we'll, we'll do that at another time, what, like, two things that we need to point out here is, one, how much did this cost us, or cost Upper Cumberland, because it costs money to do this. Two, I do want to point out that there's, that there is a differential here, the executive branch is there to execute, not make decisions, okay, they're there to execute, execute the will of the council, and a decision such as this huge email on how to do all this, isn't a quick decision that we were discussing where, hey, uh, a light bulb went out, okay, that's not that, this is a huge, this is a huge.
What are your, what are your, I'm sorry.
Your email. Your email, you, you will take down all older original lights and canisters of the ball field area at the car city parks, those lights canisters will left on the ground for the town's public works crew to remove. You will cut the light poles to the height of thirty-five feet, very exact, current security lights and wiring of those poles will be left in place, pretty exact, town of cards will sa, tank, um, obtain the electric company's storage at no cost to the town, sufficient number for one thousand lumen lights canisters, I mean, these are very detailed, these aren't, these aren't, well, let me finish.
Maybe, maybe, let's, let's speak to this.
These are very heavy details, not something that is a quick decision to be made, this is a council decision, we're cutting light poles at thirty-five.
May we let Les address this?
I don't think Les needs to address it.
It's not Les, it's not.
Les didn't type the email.
He was part of the conversations where we arrived at this.
I don't think that's important, I think the important thing, a decision was made without council approval.
That's, no, that's not correct.
And then we lied, and then we lied at the last meeting.
Mayor Smith, uh, most of the time I disagree with this council, constantly, do I not?
Just about every meeting.
But at the time, the council makes a decision, we go forward with the decision, and we move forward on it, whether we like it or not, now, if you don't like, if you don't like a decision, you have the, a really neat power to veto it, and you can do that.
And, and again, up front.
But you're making decisions, you're, you're.
May I restate what I said up?
Legislating.
Those, those.
Administering.
May I say, if you read that correctly, we had had several meetings with Upper Cumberland, with, with the public works, myself, we had talked about all the different possibilities, and that was just a memo to him saying, this is my understanding of what our agreement was. That was, that memo, if you were reading.
That is not your lane.
Let, let me finish, please, that was a memo of understanding saying to, to, I think it was Mr. Anderson, this is my understanding of what we've agreed upon, you tweak it and let me know if there's anything, and that's when he came back and said something about and it was kind of cryptic, because he said, security lights and the poles, we'll have to repost the poles, and I was thinking he was saying, okay, there's additional costs, so I said, then, I guess we could take them down, and then I talked to the police and said, no, we need them. That's when I called back and said to them, we need to keep these up, now, again, if they had thought I wanted those down, they would have come down at the same time that the major lights came down, you don't, that's just, that's just economic sense, you do it all at the same time.
Let me ask a question, did they own the major lights that came down, no, the city owned that, were they not doing us a favor by taking those lights down for us?
I understand.
So that wasn't their equipment, so they're probably a different work order, it wasn't the same department, someone volunteered their time to come over and help us take those lights down. The other ones asked a work order through the company, through Upper Cumberland, and say, hey, we've got security lights that have been requested taken down, well, guess what? I've got to put power back on over here, do this over here, I don't have time to do that, we'll get to it when we can.
How, how bad does this seem to look on them, I mean, it, it looks like it's, I mean, and it shouldn't be, but it looks, it looks like negative publicity to them, and we want to keep a good working relationship.
I don't think they did anything at all.
No, I don't think they did anything at all, but, but, it's like, we're not, we're not communicating, just, I mean.
Okay, let me ask you a question, and this goes back to what the charter says, the, the mayor has a day-to-day running, if you know there are lights that are dangerous, that have already, two of them come down, you have parents calling you, one of them was your daughter, check councilman, saying, we're very concerned because these lights are dangerous, what's going to be done about them?
It's not a day-to-day.
Excuse me, excuse me, and what we did is, did you have communication as executive director of, with the general manager of Upper Cumberland, with the CEO of the town, what can we do to make this right? Well, first of all, they have to be taken, now, if we had taken every single decision and said, let's wait till the council meeting, those things would still be up there falling down, so we had a general, uh, meeting with the general manager, with engineering, with our puppet works, Derek and Les were part of all of this, we talked back and forth for probably two weeks. Uh, I, I said to them, if we take these lights down, we're not gonna have any lights out there for our kids to play, to practice by, and the general manager was kind enough to go into their storeroom and find some lights that worked perfectly. Would, we could have put them up five months ago, where they would have lights on the field now, we, we, I mean, this whole thing was handled as well as could be possibly handled between the people involved and the people in charge. If, if you're wanting us to wait for every single council man, meeting to make a decision, we'd never function this city.
I don't think this is the issue tonight, the issue is that you sent an email and told them to take down the lights, and you lied, and yes, you lied at the last meeting, and you said you didn't know a thing about them coming down, or why they came down, period.
Well, Sam, I'm sorry, but you're, you're wrong, I did not.
No, I'm not wrong either.
I did not know until.
You lied.
Sir, let's stop that kind of language, that's not, that's not the thing of a council.
I'll say, I'll say this, I'll say this, I think the public has information, they need to hear about it, because this is happening a lot, this, and, and this is one where it's got caught, and, and, and Mayor, in all seriousness, I completely believed you at the meeting, I was like, there's no way, I, I mean, I completely believed you, I took your word on it, and I'm thinking like, something's going on with Upper Cumberland, and it made me have a negative opinion of Upper Cumberland.
I simply just did not know until we got your email that was very cryptic, saying something about lights taken down at the park, and I said to Danielle.
It's not cryptic to say the lights were taken down at the park.
Excuse me.
I don't know what's there.
There's nothing cryptic about it, you can't, well, it's cryptic, it's dark out there.
But we thought you were talking about the ball field lights that had been taken down, we, I had no clue what you were talking about, she had no clue, nobody around had any clues, somehow you knew they were taken down.
What we want to do as a city council.
How did you know, by the way, how did you know before any of us those lights were taken down?
Because everyone knew it.
Who told you, who told you those lights were taken down, how did you find out about it?
How did y'all find out about it, y'all went out there and played baseball and it was dark?
Yes, but you.
Football, it was dark, okay, well, that's how we all figured it out too.
You called us the morning they were taken down, before they were, I don't even know when they were taken down, but you called us that morning and said, put this on the agenda.
Well, thank you, I'll take that as a compliment, and that, and that fast at reacting.
You're, you're not answering my question, who told you those lights were taken down?
I do not recall who told me.
Well, then how did you know?
Okay.
How did you know?
Let me, let me go through this in a really easy, simple manner, okay?
No, please answer me, who told you, how did you know those lights were?
If you let me answer, you'll answer.
We didn't know, you did, how did you know?
Okay, can I, can I answer you?
Sure, go right ahead, tell me.
This is how I mysteriously, and very, very mysteriously found out, um, I got a Facebook message from a constituent that said, the lights were taken down. And so.
How did they know, we didn't know, no.
They might have seen that it was dark out there.
It, it, I mean, they might have saw an absence of light.
No, 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 it was that morning.
I mean, that's how I would know.
You sent us the mail, email before the lights were even taken down, that's what.
Can I say something?
Did I?
Can I say something? Does it matter who found out and when they found out the lights were?
Yes, it does, because they're accusing me of something.
Wait, 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 can she quote that, say that one more time, wait, wait, say that one more time, accuse me one more time, I sent that email, when, when's the timing I sent the email?
You sent it, what is it, eleven o'clock that morning, or something like that?
Okay, so you, so you're, you're saying I've sent an email about lights being taken down before they're taken down?
I don't know.
Okay.
We're just saying we didn't know about it.
No, no, it's what you just accused me of, I just want to make sure, I want to make that on record in public.
Yes, that's what I was gonna do.
All right, go ahead.
Motion to go back to Robert's rules.
Second.
Okay.
Ah.
Ah. We'll handle it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's another issue that we haven't addressed either, when we have a mayor telling our attorney not to follow up with what we've asked to be done. That's an issue, that's a major issue at my point, if you forget an email, you, okay, we have mistakes, everybody makes mistakes, everybody forgets things, but you cannot contact the attorney and say, don't do this because I've got it fixed, that can't happen. That's basically, you know, threatening and trying to manipulate his abilities as a lawyer to do what we ask him to do, that can't happen.
I believe part of what I told him is that we have a good rapport with Upper Cumberland, let's do this individually, let's send whatever your findings are, let's send it out to everybody, instead of doing what we're doing tonight and hashing this out, like we're doing, I mean, this, this is, um, this was unnecessary, I mean, again, I go back to saying, if, if somebody misinterpreted five months later and said, okay, we need to take those lights down, I take responsibility for the confusion on that, buck stops here, I take responsibility. But I did not know the night we were talking about this at the council meeting, I, I did not even remember that, and it took me a couple of days going through my emails to find this. I did not know they were gonna do this that day, I had no idea, no one, in fact, no one called us to say, do you want these lights to go down, nobody even called us, yes, sir.
Attorney Mullins, are you willing to state that she asked you not to follow up on this?
I was, I was told by the mayor that she, again, like I told you, she was gonna have a meeting with UCMC's president, whoever that was, that she was gonna do a luncheon or something, and that I didn't need to call Jamie, that she was gonna get the situation figured out.
Mayor Smith.
Yes, sir.
I'm not beating you up, I'm asking you, do you not see that as an ethics violation?
No, I don't, ethics, if you read our ethics codes, it has only to do with finances.
I'm asking in a nice, calm voice, okay, and I'm gonna ask every other council member here with their opinion.
Would you like us to read the ethics code so you know what ethics violation is?
I was gonna ask each council member here, and there's no, do you see that as an ethics violation?
I do.
Let's not do this.
Do you see this?
Let's, this is.
Well, then you don't have to answer, but I'm asking everybody else, do you see it as an ethics violation?
Let me get our ethics code so you know what you're talking about.
It's a derelict of duty when we, when we request our judicial injunction.
I'll be right back, excuse me.
This is smoke and mirrors, she's leaving in the middle of a meeting.
What are our options, can you give us those, you will be the one, if we do have an ethics violation, investigation, the city attorney does that, what are our options?
Uh, I think someone has to make a formal complaint, and then I think based upon the statute, I don't know about your, about your code, but I think based upon the statute, I have to make an investigation into that as well. I have to make an investigation into that, as well as what the code says.
Attorney Mullins, are you familiar with our ethics codes, because you're supposed to be our ethics?
I, I had looked at those, he, he was, what he was asking while you were gone is what, what, uh, what could be done about the situation, being straight candid, someone has to make a formal complaint, and then the law says that I shall investigate, me, district attorney, there's several others under the statute, but I'm the one, one of those that would have a duty to investigate.